You're on.
I'd like to call the September eighth work session of the board of selectmen to order. Can we stand and pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on down, Jim. Happy bottom.
I'm early this year.
I took the liberty of going back through the past months and coming up with some of the issues that affect you. Is there one or two that you need to talk on that are really important to you?
Yeah, there is. I actually did talk to F.R. Carroll yesterday when we did our drive around and looked at the road conditions. And one of the roads that is scheduled for the following year, which is North Line Road, seems like it deteriorated quite fast, a lot quicker than the other roads have. So I'm wondering if instead of doing brown this coming year, if we might want to move up, swap those two and do North Line first. It's quite broken up.
Would your recommendation be to do exactly what you've done on the other roads where they grind it and use that material? We do the road base?
I think, yes, I do agree with that. We want to do that. Particularly the first part of coming off from Ledge Hill, that section there is just so broken up. We need to do that. It's not a brilliant option. It has to be done. So what I guess I'm proposing is we finish up on Durgan and then we spend the balance of that to see how far we can get on the first part of North Line.
Has he given you prices of what it would take to grind up and pave?
He said he would have it for me probably next week, so we'll have it for next week. I'm hoping.
What are your thoughts about increasing the paving budget? The warrant article? This has been asked of us at least the last five years. Budget is hinted at, CIP.
I think if we were to change how we have it structured now with the money, as far as putting some of the money back into my budget.
You're talking the $50,000 road prep, right?
Correct. And maybe it would be worded a little differently so that it could be spread around a little bit more as well. Then, yes, I think we should increase it. This year we spent about, I think it was 212,000 on paving and the shouldering.
Go ahead. I'm just.
Okay. Yep. So that's being said, I think the budget should be raised for there. Particularly if we take up the $50,000 that was in the budget, I like to see that back recut so we have a little bit of flexibility in our department in case we have another storm or two storms like we had this year, give us a little more flexibility.
So reducing the paving budget, is that what we're saying?
Well, I guess it would look that way.
Correct.
We're reducing the paving budget, but we're putting some of the money back into my account.
My understanding is that the $50,000 that used to be part of line item in the in your regular budget and then got moved to the paving article was identified as road improvement as a separate line within the budget, not just as money in the budget. And so when it got moved from being in the budget to part of the paving article, it didn't really change the use of that money. It just consolidated it outside the operating budget. I think what I hear you saying is that you need some additional money in your operating budget to accommodate storms and other things that come along. And unless we're going to pretend that that $50,000 is for anything as opposed to for road improvement projects, it seems to me that the better approach is to say we ought to plus up some of the items in the regular road budget to accommodate this work rather than take money that's supposed to be used for rebuilding and repaving the roads and diverting it to something else. See what I'm saying?
I do, and maybe that does make sense. I just know that this year when we had the washout, they had me washed out on June 17th. You know, we had to basically rebuild Eastwood, completely washed out. And then also Harvest Lane took a pretty good beating. We had to redo the whole culvert and whatnot. And I kind of feel like some of that could have been.
Road rebuilding?
Yeah.
Well, and if that's the case, then why not charge it against the 235?
I did do a little bit of that. When we replaced the culvert, we enlarged the culvert so we wouldn't have that problem in the future on Harvest Lane. But I did not do that on Eastwood.
I guess I'm just saying, if it's actual road improvement, road rebuilding, even if it's not specifically associated with more of the paving's going on and your thought is you want money to do it and we have it in the paving and road improvement line, then maybe that's where we ought to charge it. Personally, I guess I'm somewhat ambivalent about whether we take that $50,000, move it back into the regular budget. But every time we take the existing structure and we modify it, then as people look over time at how money's spent, it's easy, if you lose track of some of the details, to say, oh, look, you know, we were spending, this much, we were spending less, or over here we were spending less, now we're spending more.
That makes sense.
So every time we make a structural change in what we do with budget money, you sort of have to kind of put a little footnote in there and say, okay, well, this is why this looks different than it was before because we're just slicing it a little bit differently. Once we've made that change in the way it's sliced, changing it again just, in my mind, creates the opportunity for more confusion. So if you feel that there ought to be some additional money in some of the regular line items to cover some of this work that you're seeing, then.
So you've got.
A better, in my mind, a better approach would be to say, look, let's take this line and put some more money in it because that's what is costing us to do business.
I mean, on the paving, just road paving preparation, you spend $195,000 on actually paving roads. And so you've got 11, 7 left, so you spent $30,000 of that, $235,000 on road construction, basically.
Shouldering and whatnot.
Yeah, boulders.
Changing culverts.
All that stuff. So do we, I mean, it's already inclusive if we're thinking about increasing the paving budget. I'm just talking about that. That also includes road upgrades.
Right.
So it isn't just, so I think you're right in that we're talking about two different things. One is the general operating budget and the other is the paving or construction budget. So if we go to 250 on the paving, or whatever, I mean, pick a number, it's not really going to change the general operating costs, which continue to be an issue going forward. And I don't think Jim, other than he's got more roads to pay or more money to pay roads.
I agree 100% with both you gentlemen, all three of you gentlemen have said. However, it is a historical fact, I sat there at the budget committee that was the most adversarial committee back then, and their comments were, there were three of them, three and a half of them, that anything over $10,000 is a capital improvement, while it's not. If you understand what capital improvements are all about, they are. Carolyn at the time was very wise in to fight the battles, the selectmen could win. Because the year before, this guy left and they went and cut $15,000, $17,000 out of his budget. Okay? That's the way they reacted back then. They have changed and are complimentary. The other thing is that when they took that $50,000 and now put it in the capital improvement umbrella, it now robbed the library and the police department of putting $50,000 aside because it inflated the capital capacity. And quite frankly, this is Lloyd Wood's opinion. That was part of their strategy.
Well, I love that you mentioned CIP and let me just step in because I know exactly what happened there. That $50,000 is capital and was counted as capital in CIP even when it was part of the operating budget because it was a road improvement. So that, if you go back and look at those old CIP reports from the old days, you had $50,000 in road improvement plus you had the $185 in paving, and they were both counted. So from a CIP standpoint, moving it didn't change it because it was still, it all still fit the criteria.
When I was on the CIP committee, I don't remember that, but in all fairness, I might have forgotten that and I will research it and get back.
The downside of increasing the paving budget, which includes road improvement parts, is managing it because we've got 11 grands sitting there now that we can't do anything but pave roads with.
Well, I do have some projects still coming, so.
Right, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't in order to the benefit of the winter budget, which is the other issue on the table.
When it talks about paving, I have a couple of things here about the shoulders on Union Wolf Road and paving the dump in Town Road aprons. You have a copy of that.
Correct.
Those two proposals, can we use? You know, how much will it cost with those two aprons? And how much will it cost for Carroll to pave the shoulders, not pave the shoulders, but gravel the shoulders after they're finished Union Wolf Road? Correct?
We did talk about that. I did get a price on it as well yesterday.
So, you know, in my mind, if there are some funds available, I think they could be used this year.
Oh, there's no question.
To fund those projects. I mean, it's up to these guys to.
There's plenty of places for them to go. You get a price from F.R. Carroll and to do Union Wolf edges, shoulders, like we did up on Durgan, it's $13,000. So I'm comfortable feeling that we could do it ourselves too and get it done for less money. So that's the way I'm proposing to do it.
How much? How much can you do it for?
I think I could do it for probably about $7,000.
Could that be done by, for example, the end of the month?
Yes. And then also.
And the money would come out of paving, correct?
Correct.
Now, here is the thing I have on that is when Carroll did it, they used equipment that really pounds the shoulders down. And you and I've had this discussion. The vibrator that we have does two to three inches. Their roller does it eight inches or more. And I look at Durgan Road that has a steeper hill there, and guess what? The last two and a half inches of rain didn't wash anything out, did it? That's what I'm concerned with, and that's not a criticism of your equipment or your guys.
I do, I do feel that their job is more professional, but at this point in time, I don't feel we have the budget for it. But also on the same subject, you were talking about the compaction rate. I do have a large compactor that does have a high compaction rate. It's as good as a lot of the same equipment they're using as far as compaction rate. I haven't always had it. This is something I've had in the last couple of years because it's a very expensive piece of equipment that I brought, you know, first one, just for this. But I will agree, I think theirs does come out better. They have, you know, a lot more money invested in equipment. However, I do think ours will be sufficient for what we're trying to do on that road.
Now, we have, what, how much money did you say we have left in that warrant? And if we can use $7,000 of it.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry that you're concerned. I don't want to spend $7,000 and have to do it again in a year and a half.
On the other hand, if I understand, Union Wolf Road, everything does need to be done. It's about 40% of the linear footage, right?
I don't think it's everything, correct. When I did talk to him, he did base it on everything. He says it becomes in less, it comes in less, but he does not want to come back to us. It gives us less price now and come back and say, I need an extra $1,500 or $2,000. He says he doesn't want to do business that way.
You know, I support your decision. The only question I have is in your judgment, is the hours that you're working on that project take you away from projected fall issues?
No, I do, I do, but not really at this time because our fall budget is so small that I don't think that.
I don't think you can impact it at all, and you don't have that option.
Right.
Yeah. What would you normally do with the fall budget?
A lot of times it has to do with road grading and just getting the culverts and everything cleaned out and ready for winter.
Well, paving having Carroll gravel the shoulders of Union Wolf Road when needed, I guess we've kind of taken that off the table. And I guess as Larry, the cable guy, would say, get her done. Is that a consensus on my own?
I do also have more money that needs to be spent as far as paving. Where we replace the culvert on Harvest Lane, I need to have that paved, that's area. And also on Shirley Way, going up there, this spring, we actually had some plow damage that caught the edge of the pavement and wrecked it. We dug up the broken pavement and we gravelled it, which was fine for the summer. We have not got it paved yet, and I'd like to have that paved, the areas that were damaged, so that we don't.
So that would use your 11 grand, right?
For the most part, yeah.
So we don't have the 7 to pay for the.
No, no, it erased. I'm guessing, I haven't got a firm price on it yet.
You think a 5 grand?
I'm thinking it's probably.
Or 45.
Probably just, yeah. I'm guessing it's around the $4,000, $4,500, which would be the whole budget.
Well, I have no problem with this plan.
No, I don't either. It's, you know, provided we stay within the $11,000. $760.18.
I don't have a choice on that.
Well, I mean.
Back to the paving budget, I will tell you historically, at least over the last several years, Jim has come in pretty darn close to the 235. I mean, it's like 233 and change, 234 and change. So from my perspective, you have managed that budget line to get all that you can out of it. So I don't see a situation where, come the end of the year, we have money we can't spend that we need to spend someplace else because it's locked into this one area, which tells me that there's, that there's plenty to do, including some little catch-up stuff around the edges that you can, that you can finish up the use of that money to do what it's, what it's purpose for, which is road repaving and rebuilding. So thank you for that.
And I'm certainly not, you know, obviously we have to work on it. I'm certainly not averse to the notion of pushing the paving budget. I mean, we've, I remember when it was $180,000, and it was $180,000 for a million years. So it went to 235. If we can justify it by saying our paving schedule is this and want to push it to 250 or whatever, 275, I don't have a problem going to the budget committee with that, but it needs to have a lot of backup in order to justify it. I mean, it's not just increasing budgets for the state and increasing the budget, but it's actually.
Yes.
My recollection over the last several years, when the question's been asked to Jim, you've said that you felt that the current level for paving was covering our needs well. I guess what I would ask is, take another look at it. Look at what we're talking about going forward. The question's going to come up again. And if you feel that having more money in the road repaving budget will help us not fall behind in terms of doing this, rebuilding it and repaving, then step up and say, hey, I want to go to 250 or whatever it is.
I need the numbers from Frank Carroll.
Yeah. No, no, that's what I'm saying is that you're the guy, you're the guy that's closest to what's going on out there on the roads.
The man on the ground.
Yeah, right. And so I think it's good that the question comes up from budget committee and others do need more money. But in my view, you're the guy that ought to lead and say, I look at this and if we put another X amount in the budget for road repaving, then that will help us keep our tenure plan on track.
And if something's close, I mean, something's nine years out or eight years out, I mean, we really need to look at costs. I mean, I don't think we're currently experiencing a little petroleum bump. It's going to change from time to time, the cost of the paving, and we need to keep ahead of that so that we can continue to pave the same number of miles.
Well, the rate that we're doing right now is that we should have every road repaved at 15 years. That's at the rate we're, we're doing two miles a year, basically, you know.
This is an interesting thing, and I back him up. This is paving permission. Basically, eight to 10 years, every road should be repaved. Because what happens is it becomes exponential when it drops off the math matter. Read this at your convenience.
Now, is that, just, does this speak to overlay? Or does it speak to the way that Jim does it, which is rebuild?
Well, I can answer that question. At 10 years, eight to 10 years, you can do an overlay. At 15 years, we're regrinding and making a new base because the cracks have split too far and we're past that point.
So, and one of the things, as I drive around the state and observe state roads as well as other town roads, one of the challenges we have with overlay is it doesn't address drainage issues, doesn't address sufficiency of base. And so any cracks in underlying roads or in the underlying pavement, when you just lay a new layer on top, they're going to work their way right back up through. And, you know, that continues to happen on the state roads. And I'm just thinking out loud, wonder if we said, okay, we're just going to do an overlay at 10 years on the town roads. Pretty soon the town roads are going to look like the state roads because it's, because you're going to have cracks. You're going to have those deep boulders that work their way up.
And maybe we consider a secondary warrant article, like every five years, we're going to do five miles of reconstruction, not just paving, but actually taking those boulders out.
Well, that's what Jim does now. That's what he does now.
When he came aboard.
We'll see what he's done on Durgan Road when it's over because you're not going down four feet.
Oh, that'd be a major recompression.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, there's, there are culvert issues on Durgan Road, for instance, and on any number of roads around town. We just need to dig everything up, get the rocks out of there, rebuild it. And maybe that's a different warrant article than this warrant article. It's obvious enough for this year, but it's something we should maybe have an engineer look at.
He has been doing this, for example. How many rocks and stumps did you take out of Sodom Road? Over 250?
Oh, easily, yeah.
Out of the road bed?
Yes. And I mean, he found culverts that were amazing and poor. He also found wires from the original telephone company that had been, remember through Aunt Myra's Corner? They were just woven down, down the road and the people who looked for those things couldn't find them.
But we hope that you could actually do a 15, I mean, this is about a 15-year cycle. You could increase your cycle if your roads could withstand it, but your roads can't withstand it.
Right.
If they're not.
When he came aboard, he said, when we do Sodom Road, when we do Ledge Hill Road, I want to spend another $35,000 and grind it and use it as the material. How many culverts did you do on Ledge Hill Road?
I'm not positive of the number, but.
Wasn't it 12?
I'm guessing 15, yeah.
And Ledge Hill Road and Sodom Road were number one and two as far as vehicle traffic, still are. Durgan Road's number three, and there's some heavy truck traffic that goes over.
There really is.
Yeah. And how much to, one comment here on the pavement performance is if we repave to your specifications within the first eight to 10 years, for every dollar we spend and restores the pavement, you wait five years and it creeps up to $4 and $5. And, you know, you came aboard and you educated the selectmen, you educated the budget committee, and I look at these three roads, it's paid off, hasn't it?
We're hoping. Time will tell. Yes, that's what we're hoping.
But I just want to just reiterate, it's not the vehicular traffic that's wearing our roads out.
It is the weather. Yeah.
And it's the condition of the road bed.
Right.
We can't compare the state study with our own study because this is looking at all the roads in the state. There's a lot of roads out there that get a lot more traffic than some of our roads get. And they're going to wear out because of vehicular traffic. Cars are wearing out because every year it's frosty.
Well, it's a combination of things. I mean, it's, it's, it's the amount of traffic, it's the weight of the traffic, much more than the amount. So the heavy traffic breaks down the road surface. But if you don't have a good base, it doesn't matter how, you know, how good the pavement is, you're still going to get the cracks and the frost heaves and all that sort of thing.
Big go.
We're 15 minutes away from our deadline. How are we doing, Coach?
The expected future conditions of our pavement are based upon, but not limited to, type and depth of base material, most recent date of construction, traffic, heavy traffic volume and drainage features.
Drainage stream probably number one.
Do we want to continue to talk about pavement or move on to something else?
I think we should move on to the Sodom Road bridge. As you probably know, we've actually received a letter from the state saying that it's deteriorated to the point on the beams underneath that they recommended we reduce the weight limit down to 15 ton. Or we need to do some type of repair, a replacement, or there is a repair that could possibly be done by adding an extra, you know, 18 inches to the abutment wall on the south end. North end is not far behind what they said, so.
Are they willing to push us along on their bridge list?
I haven't heard anything to that effect. I don't know, you know, I just know that we need to probably get the signs out immediately as long as you guys are on board with that. I think we got to post both ends of Sodom and possibly at the end of Duba and then the bridge itself. But we need to let people know before we have mission.
Well, I agree.
Yeah.
I am not a bridge engineer. When the state bridge engineers send us a letter that says it needs, we need to reduce the weight limit, I think we ignore it at our peril, okay? They made us aware, we need to get signs up.
Do we have a cost on a repair?
Yeah, the next, the next question is, any idea what it's, what it costs to do the recommended interim work to restore the.
I don't have an estimate prepared for that yet, but I had talked to. I don't have an estimate prepared for that yet, but I had talked to one of the state engineers that no longer is working for the state, he's retired. He estimated around eighty thousand, thought we could get a repair done that would buy us some time. Again, it's only buying us time, it's not a permanent solution, because the spalding is gonna continue through those T-beams all the way across. Right now, it's just on the ends where it sits on the bottom of the wall. And what he's proposing was, if you add it to both abutment walls, eighteen inches stagger, it comes out of those beams where we have the most spalding happening.
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't stop the problem, it just addresses what's at the end. It's like if you have a, a steel support beam that's rusting on the, the ends, if you support it a little further out, that takes the load off of that, but that doesn't prevent the rust from continuing to creep down the beams, right?
That's a quarter thousand dollar bridge project. I mean, if we've got an eighty-twenty split with the state, and we're spending eighty thousand dollars on a repair, that's the equivalent of what we would spend on a four hundred thousand dollar bridge project. So H U B's coming in on Monday. Maybe we should talk about, are there, are there, I thought there were some other avenues for money for.
Right, and what they had proposed is putting together some information with respect to a FEMA grant, but from what?
FEMA money's going to Houston.
No, 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 that's, that's, that's different, I, you know, that's.
In Florida, huh?
Yeah, but Congress takes that up and deals with those chunks of money. As I read the information, it suggests that the way you get FEMA money is if you can demonstrate that you've had past storm events that have caused you additional repair work because of that bridge. So I may be misreading it, but they're looking for.
It's mitigation.
It's, it's mitigation, right? It's, you know, FEMA will give you money if you build a better bridge, if you build one that's higher or that's, that alleviates.
Has more volume or capacity.
Right, a flood issue. But the flood issue that you have to demonstrate is past flood, I think.
Yeah, I assume.
And so that's the question that I have, is do we have records that demonstrate that we've had flood issues and road repair issues, bridge issues associated with flooding in the past? And that, therefore, we want to upgrade the bridge, not, not in terms of water flow capacity, not just take care of the structural issues. I don't know if we have those, and, and they're gonna be here, and we can talk more with them about it, but I have no idea if, you know, in your experience, since you've been road agent, thinking about that bridge on Sodom Road, have we had storm-associated issues?